Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to our July fifteenth board meeting. I'd like to call this meeting order and ask Mr. Slade, if he would, for a word of prayer.
Father, thank you so much for the blessings that we enjoyed. The day that you made, Father, I pray that we would be able to rejoice and be glad in it today. I pray, Father, for these men. Thank you, Father, for their willingness to serve their community. Thank you for this place that you blessed us with, this opportunity, this time, coming together and participating in our government. Father, all of that, we don't want to take for granted. We want to thank you for that. Father, I pray that you will continue to bless and resource this community. Father, that you'll give us what we need: people, time, and resources, Father, to help make our community better. As we try to govern this morning, Lord, I pray you'll open our minds to see what is in keeping with your will, and, Father, what is in the best interest of every citizen of Rankin County. That's our prayer today, in Christ's name.
Amen. All right, public comments? We've got somebody from the Reservoir Fire Department?
Gentlemen, I think I'd like to take that up under my section, if y'all are willing to do that. We'll do that as an add item.
Okay.
Okay.
That's fine, yep.
All right. Uh, we have Tim Sobal. Would you like to step up?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I appreciate y'all's time. Um, I have a little dispute with the purchasing department. I'm Tim Sable. I run a company called Fast Cat Week. Haul your aggregate. Clay gravel. And, uh...
You might give us your, uh, address, please.
Yes, one-one-zero Grand Oaks Place, Terry, Mississippi, three-nine-one-seven zero.
Hines County.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyway, um, we haul aggregate. We have our bill in by the eighth. We turned ours in on the sixth last month, and, um, we pick our check up on the fifteenth. Well, I sent my sister Amy over here to pick up our check on the fifteenth, as we always do. The girl in front says her checks wasn't, wasn't ready. And I said, okay. So anyway, I called Hewitt and asked Hewitt about our check. He explained that y'all wrote eight million dollars' worth of checks. Mine was forgotten. I know it's only twenty thousand dollars, but twenty thousand is like a million dollars to me. So, anyway, he told me that they just forgot to write my check. So anyway, he explained there's anything. I couldn't do anything about it. Had to wait till the fifteenth. I said, "What's the next step?" The next step was Keith Hicks. And, um, right off the bat, we talked for a short minute. Our conversation got very, very crossed up. It was not good. And, uh, I was defensive. He was defensive, and I understand. So anyway, that went on, and he informed me that he'd have a check on his desk on the seventh for me to pick up. And this work had been done to this date, sixty days prior to today. The work was done. And I think if you ask, um, Mike Harris or Bridget at the County Barn, which are great, couldn't ask to be invited anymore professional. I mean, they're, they do what they say they're gonna do, and I do what I say I'm gonna do. So it's a good combination. You know, it works. So anyway, I come in here, sent my sister Amy on the seventh to pick my check up. Check's not available. This is twice. So anyway, she calls me, says the young lady in the front says, "I'm sorry, we don't have a check." So I said, "Well, I'll just come over there and see what the matter is." So I come over here and, um, tried to call Keith Hicks, to no avail. But when I finally got here, he comes blazing in, angry, of course, and, um...
Keith was blazing? I've never seen him.
Yeah. Rage is the word I'm using.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So anyway, I shook his hand. He never stopped with the conversation. He kept walking. And our conversation went, "You did not call me to approve for me to write you a check. When I sent you an invoice, that was my approval to get paid," I would assume. But he says, verbatim, that you did not reach out to me and tell me it was okay for you to approve for me to write you a check on the seventh. And I said, "Okay, when can I get paid?" "You can get paid on the fifteenth." I said, "Well, I'll be back on the fifteenth, and I'm not the only vendor who picks my check up. I know that." And he says, "Now, you're not gonna pick it up. We're gonna mail it to you." My mail's seven to ten days. I'm kind of ruled. So, all I'm asking you is, and I know probably after the conversation me and Mr. Hicks have had, uh, I'll probably be discriminated against from bidding, so bid. I mean, I, I feel confident of that. But, um, all I was asking, is this a sixty days today? That the work was done. And I know my check's sitting out here on the desk. I would like to pick my check up, and I'd like to go back to work.
Is this check ready for him to pick up? Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, we will...
If there's something y'all gotta discuss, and Mr. Hicks can call me and let me know if I can come back and get paid.
He'll be ready in just a minute.
Sir?
He'll be ready in just a minute.
Well, I, I appreciate y'all's time, and like I said, I've been, I probably hadn't been in business, I hadn't been doing this long, Mr. Hicks. I've only been doing it thirty-three years. I've been doing it with Rankin County for a long time as well, over the course of the thirty-three years. And this has been one of my favorite places to work till now. I've never had this problem before, and, and I'm just like him. I get off the rails. He got off the rails. I'm not denying that. But, um, all I ask is, if you tell me something, you do what you say you're gonna do. I think that just shows a lot of character.
I, I believe the check will be ready. If not, it'll be another thirty days, but I think, I don't know if they have it. Sitting up front? Okay. I thought it was another thirty, but okay. It, it'll be ready here in just a few minutes.
Well, like I said, I hope this don't discriminate against me bidding again, um, but...
You say you, uh, clay gravel's what you haul?
I haul clay gravel.
Right. You got good clay gravel. It's hard to come by, so I'll...
Well, I just, I just hope this, I just, just don't hope, no, this damages our relationship. But I was, I was set up to come on the seventh, and I said, "I'm not gonna do it because this, you know, it's uncomfortable for a lot of people."
Right.
And so I chose not to come, and I was set up on your docket on the seventh. And, um, I said, "Well, I'll get my check today. It's all good." And then this happened, and, you know, and then I, then in a rage, he tells me, he said, "Well, I'm just gonna mail you your check, and that's all I can do for you." So, there we go. And like I said, all I'm here to do is try to get paid, and I want to continue doing business because I, I love dealing with the barn. They're great, Mike and Bridget. You couldn't ask for a better deal. So, I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comments? Old business.
Uh, I'm making a motion to approve the old, uh, business from July seventh.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Brad seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Cassin agenda. Everybody had time to look over Cassin agenda?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Jay made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries. Ms. Stacy McNich.
Good morning.
Morning.
Proud to have you back.
Thank you. I would say I missed y'all, but I was at the beach, so...
Probably the wrong answer, but go ahead.
Okay, item A. Uh, we're requesting approval for the petitions for change of assessment on twenty-four real property assessments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Item B, uh, we're requesting authority for, um, the Tax Collector's Office to issue a corrective statement for the twenty-four taxes on PIN three-one-two-nine-two. This property was improperly conveyed to a deed, um, improperly conveyed due to a deed error.
Motion through.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
And item C, authority to request the Tax Collector's Office to refund the twenty-four taxes, and no other tax statement be generated for PIN six-six-four-six. This parcel was titled in the City of Florence and should not have generated a bill.
I'm making a motion.
Second.
Made a motion. Brad seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Parker.
Morning.
He can make one of the biggest changes from one board meeting to the next.
And, and, and your affection for Mr. Bass concerns me. Let me just say that.
Okay.
On record.
Okay.
But, but I missed you, Mr. President. Item A is the Gunter Road Improvements Phase Two. Uh, we recommend approval of payout number thirteen from Hemp Hill, uh, for a hundred and seventy-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and forty cents, and authority to issue that check.
Hey, Tim, on that, is that, uh, the last part of Phase Two?
Yeah, this, this, this is not the final pay request.
Okay, that's, that's what I was getting at.
This is a partial pay request. We've still got retainage held. We've still, there's a little bit of money left in the contract. This is not the final.
Okay.
Just a little bit, punch list stuff.
Yeah, I, I knew they're supposed to do, get to work on the punch list. I didn't know with the rain if they started on it or not.
Right.
Yeah. I make a motion.
Second.
I made a motion. Steve seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Item B, Watershed Protection Program Element two-point-oh-two, that's Pine Brook Subdivision. We recommend approval of payouts number nine and number ten from Southeastern Pipeline Environmental, uh, for two-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, and three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents, and authority to issue the checks. It's District Two, President.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Steve made a motion. Dr. McLeod seconded that motion.
This is, uh, our...
Yes, sir. This is our...
Anyhow.
Any further discussion?
Federal state money that came down.
Yeah, that's that major drainage thing that's in there right off of your ward.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's right, yep.
All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Item C is on the demolition disposal of asbestos building materials at the former Brandon Cement Plant. Uh, it's set for discussion and potential action. You should have in front of you a certified bid tab. We took bids on July third. Uh, we had five, uh, contractors submit bids. Two of the bids were non-conforming. Uh, they were not the low bid, uh, but they're not shown on this bid tab. The three that conformed are, uh, and Snyder Environmental Construction LLC is the low bidder at sixty-eight thousand dollars. And, uh, we're recommending award to them.
I think quite the spread.
Yeah, well...
Can they do it for that? I guess that's the question.
We have talked to them, and they went through kind of an itemized list of how they put their bid together and the equipment they were gonna use. And, uh, James Hall, my office here, he talked to them, and, uh, we, we were concerned about the same thing, Dr. McLeod. It just, it looked, now, I will say this, that the, the, the non-conforming bids were between one and two, uh, on this list, so, so there were some other bids in that area.
Okay, got it.
Uh, but, uh, but yeah, they, they, they said they knew it was gonna be competitive, and they knew they could get low. Uh, the, the high bidder on the list was actually...
They local are.
Yes. The, uh, third bidder on this list was at the bid opening, and, uh, he, he seemed perplexed, but I, I, I don't, I... He would, he was considerably higher than, uh, the, the, the second low bidder was the next highest compared to him, so, uh, they're all, they were all in that one-forty-four and down range.
Except for him.
Except for him.
I wonder if he got the wrong information?
Well, I asked him if he was tearing the building down too, at the bid opening. I, I thought, a- after the bidding was over, I asked him.
Because that's what they do.
Were you planning on tearing it down too? And he said, "No, not, not in this, not for that now."
All right, so if we approve this today, when would the start time?
So, you look, so they'll, they'll, we'll, we'll prepare contract documents. They have ten to fifteen days to get that back to us. So, minimum thirty days, generally forty-five days, uh, to start. Uh, and we'll, we'll give them, you know, we got a pre-construction conference, so, uh, max, we, we would generally say sixty days, uh, out from today would be when they would start.
And then on far as demolition side, did we get the asbestos removed?
Yeah, so part of the, the demolition, uh, documents, we'll want to have the certification that the asbestos has been removed from, by this co, this contractor will certify to that at the end of their contract.
So we can't move forward to the next process?
That's correct. So, so once we have that certification, that, that'll be part of the, the bid documents for them to know that, uh, this contractor is certified. They've got no asbestos out of there.
Otherwise, you're gonna be paying a contractor to fool with asbestos again.
That's right, yep. You need to certify that it's gone.
So we can still, by the end of this year, fiscal year, we can maybe see it completely?
And, and there's been a lot of interest. Matter of fact, probably over half of the people that showed up at the pre-bid conference for the asbestos removal were also demolition folks. There, there's a bunch of folks interested in that.
Okay. All right, good.
So we would recommend award to Snyder Environmental Construction LLC, whose bid was in the amount of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Dr. McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Hey, Tim, hang on. What about our other location? The one in Florence?
I think the man that's walking up here right now can talk to you about it.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right, curveball, right out of the box. Uh, yeah, so we, uh, the, the location in Florence is different from our cement plant location in that, uh, it has known environmental challenges that are well-known to the Department of Environmental Quality and the Environmental Protection Agency. And so the process of working through that one, Jay, is much more complex, and other parties have to be involved in the conversations. There have been conversations in recent days, within the last two weeks, with DEQ in particular. Uh, and they have, essentially, DEQ has been given the responsibility by and under the authority of EPA to address all federal and state environmental questions that may be there. And so we're working directly with DEQ to structure an arrangement that will let us eventually get that building on the ground. Uh, that is in process, but there are steps that have to, have to be completed, boxes that have to be checked first before we can do that. So that process is underway. Uh, the ball is in DEQ's court to provide specific language that we need uh, that helps us then prepare the pathway forward to, um, eliminating that eyesore. Can I just say it that way? Uh, and I think that's the intent of the board, is to eliminate that eyesore and, uh, address it because it's, basically, it's the front door of the City of Florence. And so we are, uh, we're in process. Uh, I hope that's, so, I know it's not an acceptable answer, but hopefully it's sufficient to get, to get us moving forward. There is still progress being made. We don't control the timeline, unfortunately.
Right.
Any other questions about that? I was not prepared to address that thoroughly.
Yeah.
But I think that may be good enough. Uh, Mr. President, first item under my section is to set some public hearings. You'll see items A through F are to set public hearings for July the thirty-first at nine AM. I would ask for, uh, a motion to set A through F for July thirty-one, nine AM.
That'd be my motion.
Second.
Brad made a motion to set A through F to July thirty-first. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All, all in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
And I make a motion to set G for August the fourth.
One correction there. That, that is not a nuisance consideration. That's actually a conditional use request. So, wanted to point that out to you guys. So that'll be a conditional use application that'll be set for public hearing August the fourth at nine AM.
I'll need a second.
Second.
Brad made a motion. Steve seconded that motion, and that will be for conditional use, not a nuisance property. Any further discussion?
Brian, where, where is that?
Um, it's, it's on Stump Ridge. It's, um, it's an accessory dwelling unit.
Patriotic circle?
Patriotic circle.
What'd you say? Accessory dwelling?
Accessory dwelling unit, okay.
Father-in-law.
Oh.
Oh, got it. Now I'm falling out.
Stole.
Stole.
Okay. All right, I know, I know that. All right.
Craig, before you go back now, um, Brian's got, wanna give us an update on what's been happening on Pinedale, real quick?
Yes.
With that situation we got going on?
Right.
Yeah, we've, we've had some issues. A- actually, this weekend, um, uh, at Pinedale, uh, we, we have a property. There's a lady out there doing work on a parcel of land. We told her to stop work. Uh, we've sent DEQ out there. My building official, Anthony Guy, went out there, um, I believe yesterday, and talked to some of the people there. There's some issues. They put in a, um, four-inch pipe on the road. It's clogged up. There's water running across the road. They're shooting guns, I believe Anthony was saying, so...
The Sheriff's Department's been called. They've been out there, so...
So what you've got, I, I did some research, um, on behalf of the Community Development Office. We wanted to make sure that we were dealing with somebody that actually had an ownership interest or could claim some level of ownership interest in the property. You always wanna know, when, when you've got land use considerations like that, you wanna be dealing with the property owner, uh, and not necessarily just a tenant, or certainly not somebody that's just squatting or trespassing. And so, uh, we clarified by way of a title search that the lady who is out there is actually, she actually has a deed that was deeded to her by the apparent owner of the property. I say that because there's recent activity in the chain of title, and I'm not looking specifically at the underlying transactions and trying to make sure that, number one, the legal description is accurate, the deed is accurate. There's some issues with the deeds because they were executed out of state, and they do not comply, this is my legal opinion, they do not comply with Mississippi law in terms of the appropriate form of a deed, a, an interest, the transfer of an interest in real property. They don't comply with our minimum requirements. So that's a, that's my legal opinion. Who gets to argue about that? Well, anybody that wants to assert some sort of claim in the property, certainly the county does not intend to assert a claim in the property as long as property taxes are being paid. We're not, we don't get into that, right? So somebody could challenge that if they want to. That's what I'm telling you. It looks like she has an interest. By all appearances, it appears as though she has an ownership interest. I'm telling you, that ownership interest can be challenged, and it looks like it would be subject to challenge. Eventually, she could be told by court, "You don't actually have an interest in this property." All right, so that's, let's put that to the side. Assuming that she does have some legal interest in the property, she is the right person to be dealing with. This is what I communicated to Brian. She appears to have an interest, and she is apparently using that apparent interest in the property, and by all accounts is intending to construct a dwelling on this parcel without any compliance with the county's ordinances. That's what it appears. So they are, obviously, they are doing the right thing by attempting to have a conversation with the lady and find out, "What is your intention?" And if her intention is to construct a dwelling, she needs to get into compliance with the regulations. Okay? So, that's kind of where it got left, and my assumption is that we're having a Dickens of a time, actually having that conversation with the lady. That's where we are, right? Uh, so she, uh, she open carries out there, from what I understand, and exhibits threatening behavior to anybody that wants to have a conversation, so that's become a real challenge. So I think, I think in order for us to have that conversation, we're gonna have to have some help uh, with law enforcement giving us a pathway for that conversation.
Right, yeah. My advice would be stay out of there.
Yep.
So what does happen? Now, I mean...
Eventually, it becomes a legal matter.
Right.
Whether that's us or anyone out there in the community that would attempt to establish a private nuisance of some kind because of her behavior, because affluent is running off of her property onto adjacent properties. DEQ may get involved at some point. That, that's kind of where we are. If this board chooses, and this board would have to affirmatively act, there could be a proceeding on behalf of the county that there appears to be construction activity that violates our ordinances, and we would like to address that. The, the best way to do that is to set up a nuisance consideration, right? Set up a zoning ordinance, potential zoning ordinance violation. This board handles it just like every other nuisance, but on notice, tell her to come tel, talk to the board. If she shows up or doesn't, and y'all are not satisfied that she's gonna get into compliance, you find it, a violation of ordinance. It's treated just like a nuisance.
Right.
But it's, it's actually an ordinance violation, Brad. I, it, it may be a nuisance.
Sure.
It may be a nuisance, but we don't have information in front of us specifically about...
So what instigated us to go out there and start with?
I, I think it was just an awareness. Some people called and said, "Hey, something's going on. This lady's about to do something with this property." She didn't ask for an address. She didn't...
She, she's wanting to live off the green.
She, she came into the office, Community Development, and she tried to get a permit. We, we turned her down.
It's not but two lots.
I think it's just one lot.
Is this Robin Hood? Yes, sir.
And she's been to the Health Department. They've turned her down.
How big is the lot?
I don't know exactly.
Quarter of an acre? I think those lots are...
It's two lots.
Is it two lots?
Yeah, it's two lots.
Okay.
Yeah. It's two lots.
Okay.
And, uh, and it is point, point-three-three acres, I think, is the total combined acreage of both lots. About a third of an acre.
Both lots?
Yeah. So, obviously, in order for her to get compliant with just the minimum Health Department regulations, she's gonna have to have a whiz bang of a treatment plan to be able to get compliance on that. I don't think it's possible. I don't think there's a system that can handle that. But maybe I'm wrong. I, I don't know. But at any rate, what you've got here is activity, further to construction activity, and no permit to do so. It needs to be handled as a zoning ordinance violation. So hail her into one of our meetings upcoming. Let her have an opportunity to hear the charges against her and to answer those charges if she can. And then you guys, sitting in your judicial capacity, make a decision. And my anticipation would be, Brad, that you would find that she is in violation and that we need to have the Justice Court address that.
Well, has there been some construction or...
No, yeah.
Yes, she's tried to construct some sort of structure out there, and I don't...
It's got some posts, footings.
And I, we can have some pictures.
Homemade footings that she's erected. What, do they stand about two feet tall?
Yes, sir. I, I believe she was using some, looked like s- wood that was cut under some, um, some, some lumber she bought from Home Depot or Lowe's. But it's not, I mean, it's not an approved structure. We didn't approve anything.
All right.
Hey, we hadn't voted on G. I interrupted us when we were on our other discussion right before we voted.
All in favor?
G. I'm G.
G? Aha. Motion carries.
All right, with Brad, would, would it be your intention?
I guess we have it on the next month.
Let's do, uh, let's go ahead and structure it as a zoning or potential zoning ordinance violation and ask her to come at the next opportunity. All right? Uh, are we at IMH?
Yes.
Lawson, okay. Authority for the EOC Director to execute memorandum of acknowledgement regarding the Rankin County Disaster Recovery Facility during, uh, a federally declared disaster. This is to get us in compliance with our grant request under the MPG funding. We have to have a backup location for any federally declared disaster, so that's all this is.
Make a motion to approve.
A second. Steve made a motion. I seconded the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, we've got one item to add under my section with your approval. That, that add item would be, uh, a discussion and potential authorization for activities associated with the Reservoir Fire Department. And we've got representatives from the Reservoir Fire here today to address the board. So I've, I've asked that we have a motion to add that item, please.
All right.
I'm, I'm making a motion to add, a second.
Brad made a motion to add. Dr. McLeod seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aha.
Aha.
G, come on forward. Chief, come on forward. We've got representatives, Chief, I'm gonna let you introduce, uh, all the guests with you today, uh, and then after the chief makes his introductions, I've got just a little bit of basic information that I wanna share with the board before we let Josh uh, address the board with the request.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, this is Thomas Harris, he's the chairman of our Board of Commissioners, that's you got, that's you guys represented, and then you got Gary Hand is also one of our commissioners on the board, and then Michael Robbins is our deputy chief at the fire department. And, uh, I'm gonna kinda let, uh, Commissioner Harris just kinda lead this, I'll step in if he needs me to help him with anything or answer any questions. If y'all don't mind, I'm gonna give you a handout, just kinda you follow along if you're good with that.
I'm sure I'll need your help, Chief. Good morning, gentlemen.
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, not only my presence of the commissioners, I'm also a CPA and I have some rudimentary understanding of government and fund accounting. And I never thought I would be in front of you today basically asking for a tax increase, but that is exactly why we are here. Um, as you'll see on that sheet, the Reservoir Fire Protection District has not had a millage increase since two thousand and nine. And I think Chief Swells, as well as Chief Bailey, have done a, excuse me, Barry have done a
Chief.
Uh, sheriff, I circumvented your job there for a second, but Chief, uh, Barry have done an excellent job at managing these fire departments at a very, very low budget. The reason we're here today is the continuation of trying to service our district at the same level as our surrounding areas has become very difficult. The base pay that we have for our firemen is significantly below what's paid in Brandon, Pearl, and many of the Madison areas. And we wanna attract the best, and we're very proud of the firemen that we have, but in all due respect, they have responsibilities to their families and we have an opportunity to make more money, I don't blame them for going somewhere else. So we're really trying to right-size our budget, not only from the, uh, HR perspective and pay for our folks, but, uh, we also operate at a lower cost for our equipment than our surrounding areas do. Millage increase that we're asking for today would be four mil, and this would allow us to get our pay scale up to par with the other fire departments in the area. It would also allow us to do a little bit of an increase to our equipment and our other budgeting items. Um, I applaud the amount of work that our firemen do that typically would go out to contractors otherwise. They'll actually do a lot of the work themselves because we can't afford to have contractors coming and doing the work on our path. And, uh, they're, they're a great, a group of great men, but we need them concentrating on training and having the best resources to protect our district instead of replacing starters and fire trucks and other things that we really should have somebody else working on. So, um, we've taken a lot of time to look at this, and again, since it's been since two thousand and nine, we think it's time that we have a, a bit of an increase so that we can help better service them. We also anticipate that there may be a new fire department coming about soon, uh, with an annexation. And our anticipation is we would need both a millage increase and an annexation in order to meet all of these needs. Our fixed costs have gone up, our variable costs have gone up significantly, uh, and as you know, uh, the rate of inflation outpaces the rate of appraisal increases for property taxes. So, uh, again, I never thought I would be here asking for a tax increase, but I believe government is here to serve the people and, and the fire department is at the basis of serving the people. Um, so at this point in time, I'd be glad to answer any questions, or Chief can answer any questions you may have.
So you said it would require a millage increase and the additional
Anexation.
annexation. So would this cover it, or...
We currently anticipate if this was done alone, that we would not have enough to also do the additional fire department. If we have a millage increase as well as an annexation, our current anticipation is that would provide enough funds to service the new fire department as well as, uh, meet our particular needs across all of the fire departments. We would need both of them.
Do we have an idea of how many house tops?
Yes. Uh, well, I know it goes all the way, I was told, to Lake Road nearly.
Almost to Lake.
That's, uh, I don't have any miles, but it's a long way.
We're, we're trying to account, Steve, for the way that the Rating Bureau looks at fire protection districts. And so you're kinda limited to setting your, what would be, in this case, the annexation area, you're kinda limited to five road miles, and because that's all you're gonna get credit for based on where the station is located, and so we've, we've anticipated where the new station would be located and then overlaid an aerial that is five road miles, and it appears that that district boundary would almost get to Lake Road. So there's some coordination that can occur with your Pila Hachis, with your lake harbors. Uh, there will be some additional fire protection synergies that come about from cooperation among the various responding agencies. So, uh, it's a, it's a good plan. Uh, Keith and I have met with Josh specifically, and we've talked through a lot of these details, and based on my understanding and the leadership of the department, it's, it's, uh, it's, it seems that it's necessary that we try to do these things together for the best interest of the department primarily, but also in the best interest of the citizens out there. This is the last point I wanna make. When we set our fire protection, protection district boundaries now, we have consistently, and we've done this at least two previous times with other departments, where we've reset fire protection district boundaries. These are the areas that fall into the taxing responsibility that are levied because they're getting fire protection that they did not have previously, or they're getting fire, th- they're finally paying for fire protection that they've had.
Right, that's right.
Right? So what we try to do is to make sure that the response area is the same as the fire protection district boundaries. That way, all the houses that get the service are helping to pay for that service. So this is what we're trying to do here. If we're going to expand reservoirs' response area, then it only makes sense to also expand the taxing district to account for that new response area. So there's two things going on. The general millage for the department, and then the total footprint that corresponds with what the department is responsible for.
Right.
Everybody that's getting the fire protection pays for that. What does that mean from a taxpayer standpoint? What are they getting in exchange? Uh, I, I think this board knows what I'm about to say because of the experience that we have with the Reservoir Fire Department. Very well-run, very well-managed department, well-staffed, full-time fire response, uh, close coordination with ambulance services, most of what they do is responding to medical emergency calls. Uh, very well-done department, right? And so they have managed to, to create a department that is, by all accounts, professional with limited funds, with the same amount of funds essentially for the last sixteen years. What does it mean for the taxpaying citizens out there? Number one, they get response from a well-managed, well-run department, well-staffed, well-equipped. They get professional fire services, and the insurance companies through the Rating Bureau recognize that, and they set the classifications for those HO policies accordingly. So the folks that are out in Steve's district along Holly Bush that currently have Class Eights and are paying homeowners' insurance rates, that will change based on what this board decides to do, an extension of their footprint. That would change to something much closer to a six, maybe a five. The, the impact on the homeowners' premiums that are paid in that area that fall into that footprint will be pretty dramatic. I don't wanna hazard too much of a guess, but we see reductions approaching fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
That's what we see when you go from a, say, an eight to a, to a five, or even a, a seven to a five. Uh, you see dramatic reductions in the homeowners' premiums. So in exchange for the additional levy, the homeowner will see a savings in premium on the homeowner's side, homeowners' insurance side. That's the trade-off.
And a lot of times, they respond to the rural areas during the daytime.
Yes.
Uh, that's way outside the response area because the volunteer fire department...
They're working.
Or, they're at work.
That's right.
Their job. So a lot of these people are already getting the services, but just not...
Mr. Gaines, it'll actually improve for them because right now we have to respond to those rural areas from a fire station that's even farther away.
Further away.
So if we have one at the annex area, then we'll have a response time much quicker to those rural areas. A counselor, you're welcome to come to my day job anytime and represent what I try to do just as well as you did with it. That was an excellent summation.
Yeah. Alright, we also have a plan. It relates to your bond issue, we'll get into this later. But Steve's already identified and prioritized as a bond project, a new facility on Holly Bush that, and this is why we needed to have conversations with Josh and those guys, if we're gonna look at a new facility, we gotta know who's gonna be staffing that thing. And so this is part of the plan.
Without the, the additional acreage or area taken off, you, would you still need an increase?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, our, our, based upon what we looked at budgetary-wise, three mil would get us this year to where we need to be, and of course, the millage increase wouldn't go in for another year. So we would have another year of inflationary, uh, value and, and other things that would affect our overall budget. But just to get hold today, if we could effect collection today, we need three mil to get there. So if we just go to three mil, I'll be standing here again in a couple of years.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Nope.
We don't either.
I know the creation of the district was done by referendum. So in oh-nine, when the increase was done, was that another vote, or did...
It was on the ballot, yes.
It was?
It, it did go to, to the ballot.
Okay. Is that something y'all want us to do this time?
I believe we got ninety-two percent, I think. We, we were, we were very nervous 'cause, you know, just the unknown.
Yeah.
Then it came out and the vote counted, we ended up with like ninety-two percent of votes on that, so...
You guys...
Answer your question Supervisor Bishop. We would love for you guys to take this action on yourself, but if you don't, at the very minimum, we feel very confident that we can take on the task of getting to our constituents and getting them to approve this motion.
You, you will want to act, gentlemen, the, the, the annexation piece and the additional levy piece can be contained in one proceeding. We can do those as a combination item, okay? So what, what is triggering a, a referendum under that scenario is the receipt of a, an objection from the requisite number of qualified electors within the boundaries of the, of both the current footprint, footprint and the additional annex area. If there is a referendum, I'm sorry, if there is a petition received by the board, that would then trigger the election. Unless you take a different approach here, there won't necessarily be an election unless there is the receipt of the petition, right? So in that respect, it's a reverse referendum, okay? So it would really be up to the board to decide, how are we gonna structure this? So you would be required to say on the front end, we're gonna actually have a referendum to determine whether or not there is going to be a millage increase. I wanna point out to you that I'm not, I, I don't have enough information in front of me to tell you, when can that be set? Uh, I, I don't know that that has to be set on a special election day, but the action that we're considering here today, we would be well-served to go on and take action as soon as we can. And if we wait until November to have a decision on that, we will be twenty-six getting to the point where any sort of levy could be instituted, and twenty-seven for collections, and now you're right back in the same problem.
Yep.
So it just really, I, we need some guidance here. You're being introduced this, the reason that these guys are here today, they had a special call meeting to, to get their all of their arrangements in order here to get in front of you guys. The reason we came today is because there's, it's kind of a, there's a time pressure here. Uh, we need to be able to act before you set your budget.
So we have our new boundary, right?
We, we, we have the beginnings of a new boundary, I need to work, if the board is willing to consider uh, a process that allows for an expansion of reservoir's current response area and taxing district, I've got to get with Lance and make sure we have all of the legal descriptions ready to go, and then there's a process, Jay.
Well, I was really more or less getting to, have we gotten with Stacy to find out how much avalourment that is going to generate?
I did pass that along, uh, well, I didn't pass along the board, but I passed along, um, the two mil increase, and so, but I can give him that four mil increase. And what I also passed along, what it would increase her taxpayer, based on the average.
So Josh, y'all have all that?
I just, I do, we do.
So you feel good about the number?
Supervisor Bishop, if you were asking specifically for the annex, there's still some question there. As far as the overall millage, based upon what we know is going to be there, yes, we feel good about that.
Okay. I just don't wanna have to revisit this again in two years.
No.
I'll promise you we'll be back for three if we do.
So I have a question. How much does two hundred and forty dollars a year on a six hundred thousand dollar house increase taxes? How, like, how much is that person paying in taxes now?
Uh, gosh, without my numbers in front of me, um, I would say it's based on a six hundred thousand dollar house.
Sure.
Um, and is that with the increase?
Right. Yeah, if it went up two hundred and forty dollars, how much is that? Is that two percent of their taxes, uh, is it going up twenty percent, forty percent, fifty percent?
Just a guess, Stacy, about four grand, probably.
Yeah.
In school and county.
That's right.
Close to four on a six hundred thousand dollar house.
Okay, so two hundred and forty dollars is not excessive.
About five to ten percent.
Okay, got it. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Am I close?
You're close.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yes. Great, thank you. Probably.
Yeah, I'm also an engineer.
Sorry. Right, Tim?
Don't comment Tim, my taxes.
I pay too, I pay, me too. I was trying to remember what mine were, I mean, uh... My house a little smaller.
Yep. If you're paying two grand a year for homeowners', current homeowners' insurance, which may be higher than that if you're in the rural area on a Class Eight, you may be paying three grand. If you're paying fifteen hundred after that because you're now in a Class Five, you're way ahead.
I'm going from an eight to a five.
Yeah, you've, you're way ahead.
But that's in, in the new area, right?
That's in the annex area.
Like, there, that's already included, would have already been.
They're only gonna, the, this is why it's so important for us to structure our response areas to fall in line with the way that the Rating Bureau grades c- fire classifications.
Right.
It doesn't make sense for us to give the departments a fire response area where the great, the Rating Bureau says, well, help yourself and respond all you want, but there's no benefit to the people that you're responding to 'cause you're outside the five-mile radius.
Okay.
So we've, we spend a lot of time.
We're graded every five years by the Rating Bureau. That's a lot. As a matter of fact, we're, we're gonna be graded this year. There's a P-Day gonna show up and, uh, grants, and, uh, so it, this, this works well, it gives us some time too. So they won't be back for five more years. So we do an annex, you build a fire station, you have, you have several years to get all the pieces in play uh, before then. Another thing is, is when I met with the Rating Bureau was to find out, if we do do an annex, how much can we take in without affecting the current, the people that are currently in our district? Because the last thing we wanna do is take in an area, and like, wait a minute, you're gonna go from a five back to a six, and then all of a sudden, all the, everybody, all the residents of our district jump from a five back to a six, and their insurance rates go back up, they, they wouldn't be happy about that. So when I met with them, they gave me a map that Mr. Schley has and, um, Mr. Higgs both have, and I sent an email to them uh, that shows what we can take in without affecting the rest of our fire district. They said, you can take this, and it will not affect what your current recovery.
Okay. We have more conversations because what we take in and give to ResFire is gonna mean that there will be some departments that are currently responding to those areas that may have to move from primary to secondary, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
And when you do that, you wanna have good conversations on the front end with those, the leadership of those departments, 'cause it will affect them. Don't anticipate that's gonna be a problem, but we have to have those conversations. Jay, we can't, you're asking the right questions, but we, we need a little time before we answer.
And, and this is, Commissioner Harris said earlier, the, the increases we're getting every year on taxes are not keeping up with the inflation rate. I mean, for instance, y'all, y'all already know, you're well aware that PERS is going up a half a percent every year for four years.
Right.
So there you go, you're getting hit on that right out of the gate, plus health insurance costs. Every year we get five percent increase, sometimes it's a ten, along with just the inflation of, of the equipment that we purchase. The air packs in two thousand and nine cost us about three thousand dollars for an air pack, a spare bottle and a mask, now they're ten thousand two hundred dollars for that same exact air pack. So, I mean, just kind of a, a, a quick example of how much things have been inflated, and it's just kinda hit that point now, we've hit that wall that the increase, the, the projected increase that we got, uh, that, that Stacy gave me for this coming year does not even cover, uh, what we're gonna, uh, be going up in PERS and our health insurance. That's it, it doesn't even come, so we can't even adjust to any... That's it. It doesn't even come. So we can't even adjust any of the other line items in the budget just based off the increase that she's already sent me.
That's the growth increase, right Stacy? That's not accounting for new area. It's, it's picking up new houses that we know about. And it's picking up the, what we call the growth, the increased evaluation. Okay.
So Josh, when you said the rating bureau told you you could take in this area without negatively impacting the rest, was that understanding that we were gonna build a new station?
It is. It is. As a matter of fact, we met with them, we kinda dropped a pin in the area that I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah.
Uh, and I was pretty close up there.
You were.
And, uh, so we dropped a pin where I thought it was gonna be and then they did their assessment based on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
With respect to that added item, I don't want to assume that the board is, has heard enough, that's had, had all your questions. But as an added item, I, I indicated that potential action was there. So what would the potential action be if the board is willing to move forward? It would be to, uh, structure the process for allowing Reservoir Fire Department to have a millage increase on the fire levy for its areas. And then to expand its response area to include the annexed area in the Holly Bush Road community. That I would need action to, to start that process. And so that would be the action that I would ask for today if the board is prepared. If you're not prepared, we'll take it up at the next board meeting.
Well, this, what you're asking for is to have permission just to work through this planning part.
Yes, sir. Well, actually, Steve, I'm, I'm asking you to, in essence, to start the process to schedule the required public hearings.
Yes.
And that's what's upcoming. The public has an opportunity to hear what the board is intending. Now, in order to stop it, once it's started, they've got to do, uh, their own petition and bring that forward. But assuming, uh, that we, that the process itself moves forward without objection, we would start that process today. There would be a public hearing at an upcoming meeting.
Can we, like, on our website, show a map of what's gonna be annexed and get with Rockin County News, Chuck, and let them publish something where the people will know?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I think we can do all this together. We can start the process. There's a process that's gonna take us probably thirty days just to get to a point of decision at least. So. Dr. McLeod, you got any feelings?
I mean, I, I have, um, it's not gonna increase our taxes that much in our area.
Right.
Um, and certainly those guys have done a great job of taking care of us. And that includes all the way back into the back forties of the developments that have been made in my area.
That's right.
Over the last twenty years. So, um, I mean, I would, I feel pretty strongly about the fact that we should at least move forward with the whole thing, understanding that if something came up that was completely out of control, we could stop that process if need be. So, I mean, I would make a motion that we move forward with, uh, with this, um, beginning stages.
I second that motion.
Dr. McLeod made a motion to move forward. Steve seconded that motion. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I'll get Mr. Jessica and we'll make sure that the wording is appropriate. Okay. All right. I believe, gentlemen, that is it. I do have need for executive session of the property acquisition and economic development. Uh, but we'll, we'll address that when we get to that point.
What about Mr. Hicks? Yeah, straight in the cove up there. Right. And with Keith Hicks, our county administrator?
Good morning, gentlemen. Uh, the only item I have this morning is approval payout of number ten from Fort construction. Uh, this is for working reservoir east. It's a amount of two hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred thirty-eight dollars fifty-four cents. District four harbor project.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Steve made a motion. Jay seconded that motion. Any further discussion?
We're gonna get his check today.
All in favor?
Unless he shows, just follow this conversation.
I'll put out the difference in being raised in it.
Right, absolutely. Yes, I, I got you there. So we're ready to vote. I can't remember what we're doing here.
I think we all.
Yeah, we done, we voted on it.
We voted on it, okay.
We do have some guests under additional business, uh, I'll invite Rudy. Hopefully he brought some handouts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody doing?
Good.
Not too bad.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
James, you got one? How's everybody doing?
Good, good. We're gonna keep this as informal as possible. We're gonna keep it as quick as possible. We've got other business and it's getting close to lunchtime, so. I believe back earlier this year, so January, February, you guys were kind enough to hire us to look at your facilities. Uh, look for improvements, look for ways to reduce utilities and operations costs, uh, but also tackle some of your deferred maintenance. And we've been working the last four or five months to bring you guys some options. Want to thank Ben and his team. Want to thank Craig, uh, Mr. Hicks as well. Uh, Jay was part of that process as well. We probably had seven to eight million dollars worth of projects that you guys could have tackled if you're not going to. The budget doesn't allow it and, you know, some of those can be, um, tackled a little later on. But we did bring you some projects up from a deferred maintenance standpoint, need to be tackled here in very short order. And based on the feedback that we had from our, uh, previous meeting about a month ago, are very high priority, just based on the condition of some of these items that we're gonna talk about today, as well as the need to tackle them because of the use of some of these facilities. Okay? So we're gonna run through those real quick. I'm gonna keep it high level. I'm gonna tell you all the things we could look at. And then we're gonna go through essentially two project options on, these are the highest priority, uh, highest priorities. And then we have a couple others that we need feedback from the board on whether you wanna tackle them today or wait a year, wait two years, whatever, whatever that is. Is that cool? Y'all stop me whenever. We'll answer questions. First couple slides, you guys have seen these before. Trying to reduce operations costs. We're really trying to make sure, uh, your buildings are operating the way that they need to. What's that slide? It says utility analysis, if you don't mind. It's that third slide. Really what I wanna highlight is that municipal complex, that two ninety-eight a square foot that you see there in that, you know, orange left box. Uh, so that includes the jail, this building.
And which justice center and the district?
Yeah, and apologize, uh, Mr. James Rogers with me today. He's the reins behind this. He's an engineer. So he's gonna answer some of the hard questions that you guys may have with their technical nature. That two ninety-eight a square foot is high, uh, even including the jail. And so we knew that we're gonna be opportunities there to save the county some dollars. Um, and so one of the options we have mainly at the Justice Center addresses that, right? So that's a good thing. We'll lower those costs. You'll see that come down and, and stay at a lower, uh, level for the foreseeable future. As you look at that next slide, it's, uh, perfectly color coded, uh, because it's James likes colors. These are all the projects we've looked at. So all of those checkboxes you've seen here are really why we haven't been back in the last four or five months. Because we've been hard at work sifting through your facilities, inventorying your HVAC systems, which are one, some of the more expensive things, looking at your roofs, uh, which are not fun to pay for. I think everybody would agree on that. Uh, so it was comprehensive. It wasn't just, hey, you got some old stuff, we probably need to replace it. Uh, it was a lot of time spent with, uh, again, Ben and his team, James and one of our other engineers to come up with, hey, we believe this is your best, um, investment when it comes to this type of project. Okay? You guys can read it that way. Uh, your lighting, that your next slide, your lighting is your love hanging fruit. That's what's got a return on investment for this project, um, as well as your, uh, network thermostats, your, your upgraded controls. Several of these buildings are in dire need of controls because we have either comfort issues or we don't have visibility to, visibility to how we're managing those controls when folks aren't here, right? The jail's got twenty-four hour occupancy. This building doesn't, right? Others don't. So we don't need it to be sixty-eight degrees in here at two AM in the morning. We can dial that back. And in the earlier hours of the morning, we can kick it back on, make sure we're just being good stores of our taxpayer dollars, right? So those two right there, the, the top one, that LED lighting, that's to finish out what you guys haven't done. Uh, and so you'll be realizing those savings in very short order. We'll, we'll get done with that in, you know, probably the first thirty to sixty days. Um, and then the network thermostats will be shortly thereafter, right? So even the systems that we're not touching, making sure that you have good control on them helps those systems operate more efficiently. It helps them last longer. Okay? Also, it helps Ben and his team to operate the buildings, uh, without as many headaches and having to go directly to a building. He'll have more visibility, whether it's an iPad or computer. Uh, so it helps him to do his job a lot better. All right, this is kind of the, one of the big ticket, ticket items in our, our, our opinion. This is the Justice Center HVAC system. You've got some, a lot of your system components that are close to the age that I am, right? So they're twenty-five years plus and useful life from an engineering standpoint is around twenty years, right? So we're getting to that point where failure is not probably gonna happen. It's imminent. So that's why we focus on the Justice Center because we knew that that system needed some love. By the time we get done with that project over there, and again, it is a big ticket item, you'll have a whole new system that's operating the way that is, that it is supposed to. So from a comfort standpoint and from an operation standpoint and even an efficiency standpoint, you guys are gonna be in really good shape. Shouldn't have to touch that building from a mechanical standpoint for the next twenty years. Okay? The JDC, uh, was actually scrapped. We took that out, but we can talk about that, you know, from a financial standpoint. Uh, but I just wanted to let you guys know we did look at that. Uh, there are some opportunities in the next, either today if you guys wanna do it or the next two, three years to upgrade those systems as well. And they operate a little differently. It's twenty-four hours, you know, typically a day. Uh, but we pulled that out really for the economics of the project. Okay? Annex building. Uh, Jay was kind enough to bring this to our, our attention. You guys have some comfort issues. Uh, I think there's several folks that operate this building that would agree with that. Uh, and so we've got, uh, one of the second project options that we have, it's just a, uh, tad bit higher, addresses a lot of those issues. Actually, we went back and we reworked it. We're not replacing a lot of the systems. We're replacing the controls and how you operate the building, which will reduce significantly all of your comfort issues. That's our goal there. So hey, hey, a lot of that equipment is still in pretty good shape. Let's just make sure that we're controlling it well. A lot of that had to do with, James, correct me if I'm wrong, thermostat locations. Which ones were tied to specific thermostats? Correct?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. And, um, the dampers that actually control airflow to all these spaces, I mean, they're from nineteen ninety-five, whenever, you know, you guys constructed the building. So those need to be replaced. Yeah, thermostat locations, um, as well as in this room in particular, I believe, from just seeing some old layouts. I believe the boardroom just used to be this area right here. So now we're, now we're conditioning a lot more space, especially in here. So maybe there might be some, um, ductwork modifications to get it to bring more air specifically to this room and help, you know, keep occupancy.
A lot of operations out of this building, right, uh, from.
So would you be relocating these thermostats?
I think the, these, um, these are probably okay. It's the, it's the, because you have a system that, um, specifically with this system looks at seven different thermostats and comes up with the average of, of what those thermostats are reading. And then that tells the unit on the roof to go into heating or cooling mode. Um, you wanna make sure your sensors are placed in, um, in zones with similar occupancy. So right now you've got two in here, you've got one hallway out here, you've got, I think, two and a couple offices, one in the hallway. So just making sure that those temperature sensors are in a place that's actually indicative of how, how an area or a zone is, um, is occupied at any given point in time.
Does that make sense? He can get technical?
Yeah.
Like real technical.
I think Jay's question is more, can Jay turn around and touch the panel and make the air come on?
That's exactly what I'm asking. That's a legit question.
I had an answer? An answer to that?
No, right now.
That's right.
We, we can, um, certainly with the controls upgrade, we can do, you know, a master thermostat. So this room can have priority, for example, um, over the, the entire system and override it. And that's, and, uh, cause I know, you know, this was a, this was a major thing. So, yeah, we can set it so that these thermostats in this room take priority over the other spaces, offices and everything else that are, um, kind of in the back over here.
And based on the way it's controlled, there's a lot of bodies in here right now, right? So there's times when that thermostat from a master standpoint takes control, it will make sure that this room is much more comfortable. And when it's not, right, there's not as many bodies in here. You guys aren't having meetings. It'll result back to something that's not as intense.
So if we was to lower this down, would that lower down the temperature in the whole building?
Uh, not right now, no. If you've got a, the way the system is controlled right now, you have to go and set, uh, multiple thermostats down to get the rooftop unit on the roof to respond and cool all of the spaces because once again, it's looking at, um, it's heating and cooling based on the average of seven different thermostats located in different areas of the building. So our, our goal is to simplify that.
So this building will have multiple zones?
It'll stay, yeah. Still have multiple zones, uh, controlled by, uh, or conditioned by multiple, um, rooftop units. Uh, but we're improving the controls, um, and giving it a more local.
Cool. You wanna talk about roofs? Roofs aren't usually fun. We're gonna talk about them anyway. Justice Center, the old courthouse, the community development, about half of that, the JDC and the Reservoir Fire Station were all roofs that we looked at. We honed in on the Justice Center building, built twenty-seven years ago? Jay? Yeah, uh, so twenty-seven years ago. Roofs last between twenty-five and thirty years. That's what they're rated for. And so that's what we focused on, that roof as well, especially because of the HVAC work that we were looking to do up on the rooftop. As you can see there, I mean, it's, you know, it's hard to tell on that picture a little bit at the top right. It needs some love and it needs replacement. And now's a great time to do it because in the next several years, it's gonna start failing. We also looked at the Reservoir Fire Station. That's a much lower cost. It's a much smaller facility. We included it, but, and I don't know from the previous conversations with the fire chief, with one of the, the crew that was up here, if a new building based on the bond project, y'all would scrap the current one, you'd keep it?
Yeah.
Okay, so, uh, some of the feedback we heard is the Reservoir Fire Station out there needs a new roof. And so that's why we've included it. Okay? That next slide are just some of the other things that we've looked at through this project. Some domestic hot water upgrades at the Adult Detention Center. We scrapped those. Some submetering at the Human Resource Center, uh, Agency. The, one on the far right, which is really, really interesting, is the Intergy Municipal Discount. So it is a discount that Intergy provides that you guys have not been, we believe, receiving. And so we've done some digging. We're highly confident that it's around a three thousand dollar a year benefit to y'all's just electric bill. And so we call those, you know, zero dollar projects. That's just, you know, mainly upside. Uh, and that's included in the cash flow that we're about to go over. Cool? All right, so last, last slide here, um, really we've kinda hit on this. Just, you know, the, uh, controls integration and optimization. The good news for you guys is we're not gonna be implementing a complex control system. So Ben and his team are gonna, uh, from training, are gonna know how to operate this new control system. Cause if we implement something that his team doesn't know how to do, has to call someone from, you know, over in Jackson or, you know, wherever else, then we're not doing our job well. So we, we train on them. And, uh, the system that we use does a good job of integrating into a lot of the systems that you already have, right? So it's, uh, I like to call it the iPhone of control systems because it's user friendly and integrates well into what you guys are already operating. All right, kind of the meat and potatoes of what everybody's come here for and what we need feedback on. These next three slides are financial impacts of the project. So I wanna focus on that, uh, where it says total project to the right, that three point nine million dollars. So as you roll down that column, these are all the projects we developed and the cost of doing those. Turnkey, we're implementing them with no change orders, right? So we, you know, we, we tell you it costs three point nine four six. For some reason, we missed something. You guys aren't getting a change order, like Barnet. No questions asked. Uh, that includes all the LED lightings you see, the new courthouse, uh, controls integration, HVAC upgrades at the Justice Center, all the controls projects, which are on the lower end of things at the multiple buildings that you see there. So HVAC replacements, replacements at the Community Development Center, EOC in the Florence Library, which we didn't get feedback on was needed. And then the re-roofing at the Justice Center. Uh, you see that Intergy rebate, um, there in that last X. The next column over that says annual ECM savings. That is the annual savings that the county will be realizing for the next twenty years. And we, we show that here in a cash flow on the next slide. You guys have a rebate that we'll handle for you. We'll just need a signature from, you know, Sid or Keith or Mr. Schley. Uh, you guys get to keep that. And then those other three are, you know, I think those other two columns there are what you guys are gonna be saving. So if you flip to that next slide, that's a cash flow, the two, two orange boxes are what I'd like to focus on. That three point nine is the total cost of the project. So if you flip to that next slide, that's a cash flow, the two orange boxes are what I'd like to focus on, that three point nine is the total cost of the project. If you look in the bottom right, in that red number, it's also in the orange box. The way that we like to shape this is for about a one point four million dollars, when you count, when you factor in over the next twenty years, the savings and the utility costs and the operations costs that you guys are gonna experience, you're getting a four million dollar project for one point four, one point four million dollars. And so this project has a return on investment, it's not a hundred percent, because roofs are really expensive and they do not pay back. Uh, and for the most part, need to do major mechanical systems or HVAC systems upgrades. And so your controls and your Intergy rebate negotiation that we're gonna do on behalf of the county, as well as your lighting upgrades, are gonna help recoup a lot of that investment. So from our standpoint, when it comes to a very capital intensive project, a deferred maintenance project, we're really pleased with, even though it doesn't pay for itself, that project doesn't entirely pay for itself, it still recoups a significant amount of the investment that the county will be making in its facilities that, for the next twenty years. Right, these buildings we're, we're gonna be touching, shouldn't have any issues, okay? Last slide that we have here is a little bit higher, it's like four point three eight five. That includes two things I wanna talk about, it includes the annex, uh, building controls, which weren't included in that first, uh, which we, we touched on earlier. Uh, and it also includes the reservoir fire station library. And so just two, two projects that need to be considered if you guys wanna include this project. And that's the decision for you guys to make, and discuss it, you know, at later date or executive session. But feedback that we need to finalize all of our, uh, projects, dot Is and cross Ts, and then bring back exactly what you see here today with a no change order, um, contract and start to get to work so that as we roll into next summer, right, it kinda feels weird, 'cause we're in the middle of summer right now, we can make a lot of these upgrades at these buildings that we're gonna be touching, especially the Justice Center, um, which from an HVAC standpoint, needs a lot of love.
So what's the purpose of the network thermostats?
Yeah, it's to give Ben and his team a lot more control of those buildings, right? Here in the deep south, Jay, um, if you're not controlling your buildings when you're not occupied, you're just throwing money down the drain. And so it's from a visibility standpoint, if he can, doesn't have to go to a building and someone says, hey, I'm having a hot or cold issue, he can do that remotely, as well as making sure that we have them scheduled to, at seven o'clock at night when everyone's gone, that we're not running sixty-eight degree, seventy degree cooling, especially in the summertime. And so those are, those are lower capital cost projects that have that higher return on investment, and they, they pay for themselves in the eight to ten year range and shouldn't have issues for fifteen to twenty years with those.
That's if somebody is at the controls and lowers it down when someone's on there.
That's not true. It's auto, it's automated. So James and the team will, uh, set parameters, will obviously get the county's feedback for folks that operate those buildings, because at the end of the day, people work in these buildings, and we can't let the, the, the terms of the contract that say you're gonna save this much override how people are feeling from a comfort standpoint. Like, we're gonna make sure that your people are comfortable, okay? And some of those buildings are different, and so we'll make sure that we address those.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Was, was there a reason, I mean, we have a brand-new courthouse, is there a reason that this, I'm assuming this is using a lot of utilities? Is there an explanation why a brand-new facility that should be more modern than the rest of the facilities is running so high electricity?
I'm gonna give you the five second answer and then I'll let Jay creep through the details. You'd be surprised at how, our engineers are building the buildings that you guys operate in, okay? There's architects that come in, there's aesthetics, there's really high ceilings, right? There's, there's all of these things that you get into, even the newer buildings, we do a lot of work on the coast, so all that catering money came in. And you wouldn't believe compared to nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy buildings, the two thousand fifteen buildings, how bad they operate. And how bad, and from an efficiency standpoint, uh, they offer. Is it astronomical? No, but it's enough for you to notice, or you heard that?
Yeah, um, I'll just point, uh, Keith's asking question one, two, three, the fourth page, the utility analysis.
Right.
Pressure here, um, if y'all look, there's the, the bottom highlighted box in orange, that's the new courthouse. So, uh, you'll see those boxes off to the right, um, you've got a, a slight calculated EUI, so that's energy use in X. How much energy is the building using for footprints? The median is like the benchmark, so you'll see that y'all are actually, at that new courthouse, are using more than, than a, a facility of, of central footprint. A big reason for that and what the control system has a, a schedule, um, where it's saying, okay, the building should be occupied within, you know, from eight in the morning to six in the night. Well, you go into the controls at the new courthouse and there's the, the systems, so chillers, air handling units, pumps, everything is set to be occupied twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So the savings that you see, um, you know, on, on that, uh, on that ECM selection sheet that includes the optimization for the new courthouse would be, um, implementing schedules as part of the new controls, uh, and so-
So would you, would you change out the existing controls?
No, 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 we're, we're integrating into the existing controls. So all the gadgets and gizmos that control airflow, control airflow, those stay. But we, like right now, I think the only way that Ben can access those controls is with, you know, a, a, um, computer there at that building. So this would give him remote access, respond to hot and cold calls, um, remote viewing into, into how the system's working.
Yeah, it's just like the lawyer.
Careful.
Yeah, so did, was there explanation there?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the reason for, the reason that the energy use is high is, is the controls are controlling the building to be in occupied mode twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So to Rudy's point earlier, at, you know, two o'clock in the morning, the set point is set to sixty-eight degrees when nobody's there. So the, our, our project would integrate into the controls, put in the schedule so that we're setting back temperatures, back unoccupied temperatures to, you know, seventy-five, seventy-eight degrees when nobody's there, a lot more reasonable, less energy.
So nothing to do with it's all glass?
Well, what I was, that's actually one other point James isn't gonna make, is not, all these buildings that you saw here, they're not apples to apples. So your new courthouse doesn't operate the same way as the, let's look at one that's lower, your health department, right? There's just not this, you can't compare them, it's not linear, right? You have more people at one time that are there, 'cause there are more bodies, they're giving off more heat. And so it's not necessarily the same, but, uh, having a lot of glass windows doesn't necessarily help. But it looks good. So there's, there's, there's solace in that.
Well, we'd just be changing thermostats, just cutting them off at nighttime.
That, uh, simplified way, civ is, yeah. Yeah. Get control of your buildings, right?
But I've always heard when you cut them off, it takes longer and they work harder to cool them back down.
So we're not cutting them off, right? We're taking it to a higher set point, so think of it as seventy-eight degrees, right? Something that, when you leave town for, you know, the beach, right? When you're at a decent races, you're, you're not gonna leave it at seventy-two degrees, right? You're gonna take it up to seventy-five or seventy-eight. And think about it at nighttime, it's a lot cooler, and so when it's seventy-five degrees outside, it's not necessarily too hard to get it back up to seventy-two. And what we do is we add a buffer in there, right? So it's gonna kick on probably four or five AM in the morning so that we're not gonna have an issue getting the building back to comfortability.
All right.
Y'all, I'd rather probably like some time to-
Yeah. This is to get everybody, the rest of the board up to speed, obviously just for a cloud and being, and being new, but you guys, you know, take this. When we have some feedback, we'll finalize everything.
Well, my main thing is, I'm kinda like Steve, if I wanna hit that thermostat right there, I don't, I wanna knock it down in here-
Yeah.
And be cool.
Well-
And not go to Mark's office to adjust the temperature for in this building.
I agree.
Right, and where somebody else is in their office, I meant, you know, let them be able to adjust it without adjusting everything, you know?
We'll make sure-
I don't think my thermostat controls our office, that's just my, my, my.
Right.
Fifty, that's, that's good working conditions.
What's his controls?
We, we might get-
Yeah, it's usually my be just hanging in there.
Waste of money in there. We're gonna move on.
Anybody have any question?
Only you, Jay, if y'all there. Only you.
We appreciate y'all's work on this.
Yeah, look, this isn't the, the finish line, obviously we're gonna get some feedback from you guys, let's finalize, especially from a budget standpoint, obviously from a, what we need to tackle right now, this thermostat issue, we need to do it yesterday, apparently.
See, that they're going, thank God, they're looking at several new buildings in the council.
Correct.
And based on what I'm hearing you say about the older buildings and the newer buildings, the newer buildings are less economic, you know-
Always.
Usually, based on what you've said down on the coast especially, that, 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 there's a lot of difference. So at what point are y'all gonna get together some architects and say, we need to get some common sense? Well, I know you're probably wrong, or to you, talking about architects. But at some point, somebody needs to get together and say, if we're gonna build these new ones, they need to be, we need to look at-
The most efficient that you can give.
What I'll tell you, what I'll offer the board and administration is, we are more than happy to act as a consultant and take a look, a pass at plans or ideas. Those guys are, you know, they're driving the car, those architects are, and I wouldn't defer to them, like, I'm not, we're not trying to kind of tip them on their toes, 'cause we, we deal in existing buildings, that's what we're really good at, right? We don't do it, we, we know what it takes to make a building efficient when it comes to a new build. Let us look at them, let our engineers, James included, take a look and say, look, here's a few tweaks for them to consider. And if they wanna use them, they can, if you guys wanna scrap it, it's not my, her own feelings. So we'll, we'll be more than happy to- Is that two or three buildings you guys want to do?
Yeah, we're gonna-
Fifteen?
No.
Not, not that many.
No.
Yeah.
There may be some renovation types of, that pops in there, but new facilities, I think, we've kinda drilled down about-
Possible DA.
That are common, and then we got, uh, some fire stations that are gonna be constructed.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll be totally honest, if, that your buildings are on the more simple type things, like a fire station, um, it's not as hard to be more efficient. But when you're talking about, to Jay's point, a new courthouse, it's got a lot of glass, I mean-
Just, just is what it is.
All right, Rudy, so we're looking at three buildings with new ACs, total replacements.
You're looking at, let me go back and look, you're looking at the Justice Center, you're looking at the Annex Building, and you're also looking at the Community Development, the EOC and the Florence Library. And what, what, what that, that's lower down on there, we call those end of useful life, just because based on the serial number, when you guys installed them, they're, you know-
Oh, so you said the HVAC upgrades is, and controls is replacing that also?
Correct, so that's the Annex and Justice Center, and just mainly on equipment at the Community Development. We just kinda broke those out, just because they're, it's a, it's a one for one, and we just need a replacement 'cause they're old.
And there's four buildings here with re-roofs.
There's one.
But you only gave us price of re-roof, okay.
Correct, and the, uh, and the second option, Jay, we included the-
The other ones?
The, uh-
Okay.
Uh, reservoir fire station, just because that was a more, remember we took off the Community Development and the JDC, and the Florence Fire Station was much more, I've already-
All right, we'll study over this and look at it and-
Yeah.
And-
So, we have a little, how long, let's just say we pick two projects.
Yeah.
How long are these numbers good for before you have to come back and reevaluate?
You know, if we're talking a hundred twenty days, that's one thing, if we're talking the next thirty to forty-five, that's another. I mean, I'm not saying I'm gonna leave here, even with the world economy, don't-
We're just looking at this budget year and this budget year.
Yeah, yeah, and I will tell you this, Keith and the rest of the board, we're flexible on that. If it's a, we know we wanna do this project right here, say it's three point nine, and you wanna split it in half, or however you wanna, you know, skinny cap, we can be flexible on how we bill, just from the fiscal year standpoint, right? We need to, if we need to do several of the higher priority projects, like the Justice Center HVAC, and wait on lighting and wait on some control stuff, we'll just work with you guys to make it easier for you.
So the lighting, you have multiple buildings, do you have something that has them all broke down?
It is, it's everything that's non-LED, I will say that.
Yeah, I could, I, yeah, I could send you something.
We'll send that, we'll send that to the whole board.
Okay.
With, uh, Keith as well.
Right.
Anything else?
We're good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, guys, we got, we have our ministers from Frank first, and this would be an appropriate time, unless we have something else in the digital business to consider moving into a new location, or not developing a land acquisition.
About thirty seconds, please, just to go over and put on their desk, if you don't mind.
All right.
Put a piece of paper in front of y'all this morning. Everybody's got it?
Hello?
Uh, just go ahead and read it, it ain't time.
Basically, we're getting close on our recycling center. Uh, we had talked about some tip fees and different things. This is overview of what City of Pearl has been charging for their tip fees. I just wanted to get in front of y'all, let y'all look it over, we can talk about it at a later date. I mean, we're not going before another board meeting, so this is just something for y'all to view and see if y'all okay with, or if y'all wanna change some numbers or do something different on it, is all, all it is, so we can start getting our signage made for all this, these projects.
Yeah, I spoke with the mayor of Pearl, who currently, they do this now.
Yes.
And, uh, I think they need to go up on some of their fees, so we may get some adjusted numbers.
I was looking at some of that, probably could be adjusted a little bit too.
Especially just the commercial, you know, I'm not wanting us to make any money, I just don't want us to lose any money.
No, but you can bring a whole dump right up there and fill up a bin, and it costs one, two hundred and sixty dollars to get it done.
Yeah, cost is gonna be to-
So, and I, and I put the commercial side in there, 'cause they had the commercial side, it's up to y'all, if we go to the commercial side, we're not trying to get into that business, but-
I think if we put in, we just need to charge for it, you know, on the commercial side.
Would it cost residential if the trailer is exactly sixteen foot? 'Cause we've got less than sixteen and greater than sixteen.
I'd say twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five, yeah, okay.
Yeah, we could probably reword that a little better.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would, I would reword that, but-
So, we're, what are we planning on doing with the, uh, recycling?
So recycling will be free. I mean, I, I don't know how to-
Yeah.
How you would charge for that, uh, we've actually got a bay, a shed set up, I think you've seen it, Jay.
Yeah.
Uh, did the recycling bin, I go under, I talked to the waste management, that was gonna better fit that program. We're actually gonna, where we, they don't take stuff, we take tires, you know? I've talked to, uh, our tire waste thing, we're gonna probably put an eighteen wheeler out there instead of the tires sitting outside. My guys will go by there, put tires in there, so often are they a load of tires as they come in, instead of them just piling up right there. Uh, I've actually talked to New Core, we're gonna probably do, uh, they're gonna put a bin out there for any scrap metal. I go for Toys for Tots donation, a hundred percent of it goes for Toys for Tots, so I thought that would be a good thing for what little scrap metal we gather out there off of this, these projects, you know, when people bring in Ben railings and stuff like that, which they'll turn into something good.
You might have a fight on your hands.
And, uh, the paint, we'll probably take the paint like we do right now.
Yeah.
I've actually got, me and James Hall's got together, and we've got some ways to quantify it, where we can break it down, and we're just doing more of a drum of paint instead of running paint cans.
Oh, so we're gonna start dumping them out?
We're gonna start combining them into one fifty-five gallon drum, yes sir. On that, once we dump the paint out of paint cans and put them drum, then we can dispose of the paint can in the dumpster once the paint dries. So maybe to help us on our hazardous waste days, that we just don't have, Keith's helping me with that, and we deal with thousands of paint cans, you know, where we can consolidate this, so. But the project is coming together, I mean, if we can just catch some dry weather, we're putting together a lexical right now. I'm hoping, you know, if everything comes down next three, three weeks, we'll be ready. On it, so, that's where we at, so, y'all wanna think about this, and we'll talk about it next board meeting, kinda come up with some numbers.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
I'm making motion during executive session.
Second.
Brad made a motion to go into executive session, Steve, second that motion, any further discussion? Brad made a motion, go into executive session, Steve seconded the motion, any further discussion?
For economic development and-
Potential land acquisition.
Aye.
For them reasons?
I made that motion.
Steve made a motion? I second. Brad seconded, all in favor? Motion carries.